Is that trouble?
Should be. Okay, switch.
I think we should be good to go. The Andres said we were good to go. All we had to do is stop the meeting.
What's up, man?
Hey.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
Nice to see you again.
Doc, sir. I don't know about that.
Yeah, 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 we, we did that when I graduated. I graduated in 1979. Four of us that graduated, well, seven of us that graduated out of this group of business. And when they visited us, that's what would be a doctor's doctor.
Oh.
Your doctor. It sounded like spies like us. I mean, it was hilarious. I don't know if you've ever seen the movie, but it was hilarious. We started with a cohort seventy eight. The attrition rate was that hard. When I said, uh, reach a new person. Into the credit law school, as a matter of fact, that law school has pretty wide a member of the federal judges and governors.
I'm supposed to have another small doctor out for us.
Okay.
Things for his.
I'm telling you, when you leave, they didn't help you graduate.
Thank you for your check.
Absolutely. First day I stayed in class, I kept my master's program. The second day I stayed, I said, God.
I got this from the little.
Yes.
I have no idea on that one. That's a new one for me. So.
See if they want to do this.
This guy. So is he?
No, he said that, uh, he just wanted to let you know what he thought about it, but if it doesn't make it to one commission, then he's going to be talking.
Okay. Gotcha. Yeah. Cause the county's gonna make him improve some more. So. I want to remind you, and if I don't remind you, it'll be a week out. Hopefully it won't be.
Come on, Matt.
It was pretty standard whenever I saw a move down in Pike County. He always had made sure it was with his application, so that's where I learned about it.
Just in case. I'm like, I used to add my name on there. I just play.
You were absolutely included in that. We could not get, we could not get to that form.
Alright, you guys, if anybody wants to kind of speak, I have kind of sheets in the back.
You're doing, you're doing, you're here. So you're doing good. Oh. I think I would go first. Good to see you. I'm the first one here. Hope my prayers join. Well, I talked to Miss Patricia against properly thirty minutes ago. I know she was planning to come. I thought she was right on tape. I looked for her to meet me here. Mr. Bill is trying to retire on us. He said he's been running at me and looking too long. And you know, I don't know. And then I think he and Mr. Eadie were, you know, kind of, you know, I'm sure that has something in the benefit of mind as well, so.
Oh. It's catching movement. How you doing?
Yes, ma'am, your name is Arthur. I scoped out the name before I came up top.
I'm doing it.
You wanna just, yeah, to go up inside.
I call.
Do, do one on the right side. Like I had to play with my.
Yes, that's right. They, they talk good times. They did.
No.
You done took away next. He did.
What did he?
We're like, oh, we're paying for the same thing. We're like, not someone different. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're waiting on about one more board member, at least one more, while we can start our meeting for tonight. Thank you. So just give us a few minutes. Thank you. No, I don't think we got, I don't think we got Nick the mayor's time.
I turned them over there.
You turn it off?
Yeah, I turned them over.
Hey, good evening, Nathan. Hey Brad, I'm here.
Oh.
Alright. It flew.
Yeah.
So what happened here?
Yeah, sorry. Alright, everyone. If you would, please, um, turn your phones to silent, um, as we work the meeting. And we'll get started. I apologize, I, uh, stuck in traffic, so got here as soon as I could. Rob Purfoy, and, uh, yeah, we'll get started Thursday. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Spalding County, um, April the fourteenth. What we're gonna do is if you signed up to talk or to speak on, uh, an application, if you just, when you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Then we'll swear you in and, uh, you can give your statement on the application. Alright?
Mister Chairman, thank you. Uh, fellow board members, first case on tonight's agenda is application twenty-two oh three S. This is currently owned by LGI Homes of Georgia, LLC, uh, twenty-seven hundred Cumberland Parkway, Suite one hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three, three nine. It is represented by Agent Joshua A. Scoggins of two oh two Triple Gap Road, Suite two hundred in Coming, Georgia. And the, uh, application is for special exception tonight. Applicant is seeking a requi- or is requesting a special exception to allow a conservation subdivision with a two hundred and forty-seven lot, single-family detached residences. The lot sizes will average fifteen thousand square feet, with up to twenty thousand of the lots being twelve thousand square feet in size. The proposed name of the subdivision will be, uh, Big Pines Farm. The request is for a density of one unit per one point five acres. The proposed open space of the property as applied, uh, consists of fifty-six point, or fifty-three point six percent of the parent tract. The applicant has not indicated a specific architectural theme yet, so country club theme has been recommended with this assessment. And, uh, board members, to kind of back you up, or to kind of give you some backstory on this, this is an application that is from the mid-two thousands. It went through a rezoning process and a special exception process back in the day, uh, and it was for significantly more units when it came in. The application before you serves to replace that application, um, and is consistent with the, uh, conservation subdivision requirements of our ordinance. The property is currently zoned R-one, uh, low-density, single-family residential. Subject to property has multiple pre-existing applications with Spalding County as illustrated in the applicant's letter, um, of intent, which is also in your package and available on Nova's agenda to anybody in the audience that's following along. There was also a court case with settlement agreement that is identified in the letter of intent from the applicant. We have, uh, county zoning attorney Newton Galloway joining us via Zoom. I will let him, uh, you know, comment on the specifics of that, uh, when it comes down. But the application before you is the variance. It has the two hundred and forty-seven lots with a density of one dwelling unit to one point one five acres, uh, compliant with the standards of the, uh, conservation subdivision. The concept plan shows approximately forty-nine acres worth of flood zone included in the green space. Per our ordinance, the flood zone can only qualify for ten percent of the total amount of acreage on the parent tract. So that would be twenty-eight point five two, two, three, three acres. Even taking that into account, the amount of green space is reduced, uh, to forty-six point five percent, which is still above the minimum forty percent per code. Uh, so it still, it meets the requirements of a conservation subdivision. The proposed concept plan also has elements incorporated from the country club theme for a special exception neighborhood. However, with this being a conservation subdivision application, it does not require a special exception. It can only, it can be applied for as right, um, you know, or as a right of option up under the R-one zoning as a conservation subdivision. You see in your packets, the, uh, appendix, uh, for section seven oh three, the guidelines for the conservation subdivision. So the density factor outside of a conservation subdivision for R-one would be one home per two acres. That was if, you know, they were just doing regular lots, regular streets. However, the density factor up under the conservation subdivision with the above forty percent of green space set aside, the, uh, neutral density would be one unit per one acre. At one unit per one point one five acres, this is still slightly above what's illustrated in code. Therefore, it still meets our, uh, standards for a conservation subdivision. So the minimum lot area required is ideal from, or is actually ver- copied verbatim from code for areas served by public sewer, fifteen thousand square feet on average. With up to twenty percent of the lots within the subdivision may be reduced to a minimum twelve thousand square feet. Um, there will be a, uh, public sewer agreement, or I guess a, uh, agreement with the sewer company that also serves Sun City, uh, in this area to be able to serve this property. So it will meet that. Um, the lot sizes are compliant with the minimum lot width at the build line, be, uh, with, uh, being, them being eighty feet. The minimum street frontage is thirty feet. Yard regulations, variations on, uh, principal building positions and orientation are encouraged, but shall meet the following min- minimum standards. The front yard will be twenty feet, rear yard will be forty feet, side will be thirty feet of separation for principal buildings with no side yard less than five feet. The plan, uh, the plan as submitted is compliant with that. Maximum impervious coverage will be fifty percent limit on each lot. They will be well within the bounds of, uh, that limit when it, as illustrated on the plan. Maximum height forty-five feet. To our staff's knowledge, there are no homes that are gonna be above the, uh, two-story mark, so that'll be well, well under the forty-five feet. Their minimum track size for the development of conservation is twenty-five acres, with the parent tract being two hundred and eighty-five acres in total size. They're well above the minimums for that. Um, minimum aggregate green space is gonna be at least forty percent, once again, at forty-six and a half percent there above that. If you will move forward, I've also identified the, uh, sections in code where the, uh, uh, country club themed subdivision would apply if this were a true special exception. But as illustrated, as the revised plan, uh, meets the standards of a conservation subdivision, the country club theme, there are elements that will be included, but, uh, it is not required to, uh, for the special exception. Staff did have some recommendations. Oh, excuse me, before I get to that, um, the land use is pursuant to Spalding County's comprehensive plan. Design standards of a rural neighborhood does have an exemption for a conservation subdivision or a special exception subdivision. So therefore, the density that's here, even, it's still relatively neutral for the parent tract of the size, so it still hits the intent of our, uh, future land use map as the destination of rural neighborhood. There will be a little bit, or there will be a significant, you know, increase in traffic. So the average trip numbers, uh, to represent for the lot, uh, based on two hu- or on the subdivision, based on two hundred and forty-seven lots. Your AM peak hour trips are gonna be a hundred and eighty-five per hour, your PM peak hour trips are gonna be, or two hundred and forty-nine. Your total weekday, uh, daily trips is gonna increase by twenty-three hundred and sixty-four trips. And these numbers are from the Trip Generation, uh, manual, seventh edition, from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. If you take the census numbers from twenty-twenty, uh, for, uh, Spalding County, average household in, uh, Spalding County has one point two children. So the approximate impact on the schools will be two hundred and ninety-six children based on the, uh, number of two hundred and forty-seven lots. With the fact that the variation in construction times and absorption rates, it's gonna be kind of difficult for our office to, you know, time out when the kids would actually, you know, enter the school system. But for a total aggregate, you know, upon completion of the neighborhood, that's, those are the numbers that you're looking at based off of census numbers. Portions of the site are within the flood zone and the wetlands. The site is located within a protected water supply shed, the S-two watershed overlay map, and it is not within any S-three groundwater recharge overlay maps. There are wetlands and flood zones are illustrated on their, uh, initial concept plan. Applicant has not submitted a proposed house plan as of yet. Um, that why, there is also a concurrent, or, or that would be, uh, determined at the preliminary and final plat stage before, before they are approved. Uh, they will have to comply with the streets and sidewalk design criteria with a minimum of four-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roads, uh, required. And they have not, uh, chosen a design criteria from the four thirteen G. However, that is for a special exception subdivision, so it would not be required unless stipulated by the boards. You see the criteria for the special exception guidelines must not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties. There are multiple properties that border this. Um, they range in size from two acres to three hundred and ninety-four acres in size. Most properties that are, touch this property are. Most properties that are, touch this property are zoned R-one and AR-one, and they are developed as single-family detached residences, and a few of the large tracts are, still remain undeveloped. Sun City Peachtree is zoned, uh, AAR and is approximately six-hundred-and-twenty feet to the north and west of the subject property. It is, however, separated by an undeveloped AR-one tract of land that's about a hundred-and-twenty-five acres in size. Peak hourly traffic, uh, uh, as I said, indicate a, uh, significant increase in trips. A traffic study would be recommended, and the impact on the road system, if any improvements were needed, would have to be done, um, per the Spalding County Public Works, uh, standards. Impact on schools needs to be addressed. Um, I know that some of the schools in the area are at capacity, but, uh, that should be a factor in the board determining, uh, whether or not this is suitable. It must be, uh, possible that there are no depreciating effects or damaging, or damages to the neighboring properties greater than the benefits of the need for the spe- for the subdivision. Should really be no depreciating effects by the subdivision except for the increase in traffic and an in- increase on the school system, but, uh, both should be ready, or readily, uh, fixable. So, must not adversely affect existing uses. Currently, the property is undeveloped. Um, there's one house that's out there that has been vacant for some time. And as the property does not connect to private sewer, or to, uh, uh, public sewer, or, excuse me, as it does connect to the private sewer company that's out there, Spalding County Health Department, uh, does not need to determine if, uh, you know, the soil, the soil study is, uh, available for septic systems. The revised concept plan does meet all the other requirements of the ordinance. Staff did have a few recommendations. Project shall adhere to the country club themed, uh, design criteria except as otherwise, uh, provided in these conditions. Approval of this plan is contingent upon the developer's ability to secure sanitary sewer service from the private sanitary sewer company, Community Services, L-L-L-P. Um, no on-site sewage disposal systems will be approved. No vinyl signing will be allowed in the subdivision. All homes shall have a minimum area of at least two thousand square feet. First floor shall have a minimum square feet of twelve, or, uh, heated square feet of twelve-hundred-and-fifty. Each home shall have a minimum two-car garage with dimensions of twenty feet by twenty feet. All homes shall have fully sotted yards, front, sides, and back. Any necessary improvements to accommodate the additional traffic along Smoke Road shall be made at the developer's expense in compliance with Spalding County Public Works specifications. All public parking spaces shall be governed by Appendix G of the, uh, Spalding County UDO, the parking, uh, parking, uh, appendix. And the following amenity features that are illustrated on the plan shall be completed prior to the acceptance of the final plat. Design of the amenity area shall be submitted with construction plans. Clubhouse needs to be at least twelve-hundred, heated square feet shall be provided to our office. Playground for ages two to twelve with at least eight play elements, and three of those eight play elements are at ground level and are ADA accessible, and all other listed amenities shall be, uh, completed, uh, or shall be submitted with the, uh, construction plans and need to be completed prior to the acceptance of the final plat. Mr. Chairman, I would also like to enter in, we received an email at four forty-four PM. I was actually in Land Bank, Eva handled the phone call, but a gentleman by the name of E. Rollser stated the following. "We, the Roosevelt Railroad, want to be good neighbors with everyone along our rail line. Our main concern is establishing and maintaining a reasonably effective buffer along our historic railroad line. Another important concern of ours is the current railroad crossing on Smoke Road. It is, it is currently is, or it currently is signed, in good repair and maintained for a one-lane dirt road crossing, as it has been since the crossing was laid over the tracks, which were put in place in eighteen-eighty-seven. If the traffic became so great that we would need to rebuild the crossing to widen it, we are asking the developer to bear this expense. As it is currently sufficient for current traffic patterns, um, any encroachment upon railroad property by any persons is authorized by individual permission only, regardless of easements or rights, or rights of way that may exist. If there are any questions or concerns, please let us know. Thank you. E. Rollser, General Manager, Roosevelt Railroad, thirty-thirty Teeman Road, Griffin, Georgia, three-oh-two-two-three." And he does provide us, uh, telephone number four-seven-eight, four-eight-four, three-three-two-two. Mr. Chairman, we received this email, obviously after the reports had gone out, I've not taken time to evaluate it, but, um, I think it should be read, you know, read for the record, and that would probably, um, amend the applicant's, um, or amend the applicant's, uh, application. But that concludes our report. Staff does recommend that as it was submitted for approval, um, I guess we, it would be contingent upon, um, securing railroad permission as well, so we'll add that to our conditions. If Newton's available via phone, I'm sorry. I'll let him comment on anything from the court case. Newton, are you, are you available?
Brad, if it's all right, let's let the applicants go and take comment from, um, the folks who have signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. So applicants and our owners are here. Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, BZA members. I'm Joshua Scoggins with the law firm of Miles Hansford and Talbot. My address is two-zero-two Triple Gap Road, Coming, Georgia. I represent LGI Homes. I have here with me tonight Brian McCrane, he's our engineer at PEC. Uh, he's also available to answer your questions. Uh, the staff did a great job of summarizing very comprehensively, uh, what we're asking for. Without getting too far into the weeds of the court case, it's important to know this property is already zoned R-one with a special exception for a conservation subdivision. So, we're not seeking to, to rezone anything. All we're doing is trying to replace the original concept plan with a plan that's now been engineered. So the court case settlement involved the approval by the Board of Commissioners of a conceptual site plan. It's attached to our letter of intent. It, it was not engineered, it wasn't even close. It was what they came up with to resolve that litigation. Now that we've had a chance to engineer the site, we know how it lays out on the ground, we're coming before you to get approval of a plan that's actually gonna be able to be built, not one that's just drawn for conceptual purposes. It's two-hundred-and-forty-seven, uh, lots, as was indicated earlier. It has over fifty percent green space. I think it's forty-six and a half when you take out some of the, the floodplain area. So, i- it's certainly in keeping with the Conservation Subdivision District, the density is still less than one house an acre. But again, uh, I'll let Newton speak to this if, if he wants to, and I can answer any questions you have about it too, but the, the key thing to remember is that the court case that was filed back in two thousand, now I guess it was resolved in two thousand and six. The court's order in the settlement agreement for that case specifically said this property shall be able to develop two-hundred-and-forty-seven houses. At least that many. So, we're not asking for anything that hasn't already been in place for years. We're just trying to clean up what was a concept plan and replace it with an engineer drawing. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I don't have any at this time.
Do we have anybody else sign up to speak? We do. Josephine Scott.
Yes, uh... My concern is with this...
Ma'am.
Okay. My question is, my property and Mr. McCorkle's property will suffer damage from stormwater.
Mr. Chairman, we need Ms. Scott's full name and address.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Josephine Scott, nineteen-oh-six North Second Street Extension, Griffin, Georgia. Uh, may I point out on the map? Can I step away from this and point out on the map?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
My problem? Okay. Okay. Here is my property, here. This is all LGI, and the lovely is McCorkle's property. I called him, he was supposed to be here, but maybe he got delayed in traffic through the, because he was coming out of Lawrenceville. Okay, these fifteen homes here have, okay, there are six stormwater facilities on this property. These properties right here have no stormwater facility, and they dump down, the slope of this land is so, it's, it's so steep and it's so varied, that it dumps down on this property and it dumps down on this property. And if Mrs. Morales would change to this topo zone, you can easily see it, that there needs to be, either remove those fifteen homes from the map, or put in a, or, and figure out how to put in another stormwater thing. That side of the property was not engineered.
So that's the way the property sits right now as we speak?
Okay. Okay, let's look at it. Okay, we're talking about this corner. Okay, uh, it, the stuff flows here, it flows here. It flows down here.
Yes, ma'am.
It's coming down this way. And there's nothing stopping cleaning up the thirty-thousand-square-foot feet of hard roofs that will be pouring down into these areas. Here, here.
Understood.
Okay, and that is one of my problems. The other problem is, uh, the con-...
Come back to my question.
Yes. The conceptual plan is sixteen years old. Times have changed in the last sixteen years. We've gone through, uh, conservation subdivisions that could be put in R-one zoning, which is one house per two acres. Then we got the, that was R-one zoning. Then we got the conservation subdivision, which, yes, it will allow twelve-thousand-square-foot lots and fifteen-thousand-square-foot lots if public water and sewer is provided. And now we have a neighborhood district overlay that all public has been able to come in and talk about. And that rural neighborhood says we need three-thousand-square-feet of home on one-acre lots. And if it's a rural neighborhood, people will buy one-acre lots because they wanna grow fruit trees.
Yes, ma'am.
Their own fruits and vegetables organically nowadays. And so I am request, and I have looked at, this plan is fine if they would reduce the lot size to one acre per home. And I calculated the mathematics, twenty percent of twelve-thousand square feet, twenty homes at twelve-thousand square feet of two-hundred-and-forty-seven, and eighty percent of fifteen-thousand square feet, getting that total acreage, it will give them about eighty-five acres that they could zone as single-family lots in this wonderful subdivision plot. And I think, and that's what I want, times change. We no longer ha- hang horse thieves. People can now vote at eighteen instead of twenty-one, and the public has always had this input, and nobody's really vested, laws change. So I would like you to deny the special exception and say, hey, put it down to eighty-five lots, where people can, and that would be a great subdivision. They would have the amenities of a club, and they would be able to grow their own fruits and vegetables, which is becoming a very popular thing, plus have all the, the club amenities that this property could give them. And that, that's my two complaints. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. John Scott.
Yeah, yeah.
Two or three?
Three.
We've got it listed as three.
John Scott, nineteen-oh-six North Second Street Extension, Griffin, Georgia. Hey, I would only make a couple of comments here in desire of, um, as she showed you, we own this property all the way over and down this way. What we were really in here saying, I wanted to bring up to you, back in nineteen-eighty, we had what you might say, uh, a little bit of rainfall at one time. It came in here, and as such, we probably had ten-foot of water.
Yes, sir.
Or better. And all that came from, this guy's got a big lake, I lay over flood, it, and it pushed everything down in this section. If it happens again, this group and this group are gonna be in serious trouble.
Yes, sir.
They just, I just make it in there. Another thing, I had a question, it is a, I have to, they are coming at me right up here on our property up there, that's the, where the sewer is focused across our property. I'm trying to find out who's really in charge of that. You know? And then who's gonna look after it? And really, who's gonna watch the construction?
Yes, sir.
They got the great plan here, which I have to give them twenty-four...
Yeah, please, thank you.
Yeah, they got their great plan there, in which I gotta give them a really, uh, sixty feet of space in there to go over and meet Sun City's lot, which I assume they gonna tie into Sun City. And they immediately came to me and wanted to use my land to run this sewer on, flatwise. No, we do not do that. Now, whatever they worked out with Sun City, I don't really care. However, my big concern is, you're doing a massive amount of clearing, cause all that's timber. What are you gonna do with the trash? I, you gotta bring it back across the railroad track up there. That's, you know, right now is just kinda out nowhere. I just need to know, who'd I call when there's problem?
Yes, sir. I understand.
And now right now, see, I don't even think they've said anybody or even mentioned that somebody is gonna be in charge of the sewer, or how they're gonna do on, prefer, that's all I'm concerned.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Brenda Smith.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I should've mentioned this at the beginning, each person speaking has three minutes. Uh, just keep that in mind, please.
Thank you. I hope I don't take any longer than that. I'm gonna try to read really quick.
That's okay. Name and, just say, name and address.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I may or may not be appealing to the correct board, so please let me know if I'm out of...
Okay, all right.
...black or whatever we wanna call it.
Can you, uh, name...
My name is Brenda Smith.
Okay.
I am representing Barry Smith, who is my brother. He is not able to come to the meeting this evening.
What's your address?
Five-eleven Smoke Road.
Okay. All right.
Can I point out where it is? Okay, thank you. Right here.
All right.
Okay, again, I'm speaking in behalf of my brother Barry Smith. The Smith household is located at five-eleven Smoke Road, is a residence, and is also zoned for agriculture as well, and that's agriculture purposes. So that we're all on the same page, we saw where I've located where my brother's property is in regards to the development or proposed development. Now with the detailed plans in hand of the proposed development, Barry Smith, the homeowner, would like to request the following recommendations be considered by the board. Number one, a request for an additional buffer around his property. He was previously approved for a hundred-foot buffer. He would like to propose the buffer to be extended to two-hundred. No disturbances whatsoever from individuals requesting proposed development, or noise from equipment to or from the proposed development, which also includes equipment or vehicles using his property. Mr. Smith would also ask that the board personally visit the proposed area of the development. development if you haven't already done so, and that includes not only the appeals board, but the commissioners. Approximately twenty, maybe twenty-plus homeowners reside on Smoke Road. Mr. Smith wants to also let you review the proposed entrances and exits to this development. This would be in respect to the current road conditions on Smoke Road. Those conditions being entrances or exits on Teeman Road as well as East McIntosh Road, all of which may require county-paid upgrades if the development does not want to take over the monies. I would like to thank you for the opportunity, and I hope I get the opportunity to speak with you again very soon regarding the same development.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Little?
Mr. Little?
Yes, sir.
State your name and address, please, for the record.
Mike Little, five ninety-one Smoke Road.
Yes, sir.
I'm not a speaker, so y'all seem to learn.
That's okay.
But anyway, it is, my, my, my major concern, our major concern is the, the traffic is already there. I mean, it's already, it's already terrible at the evenings and the mornings early. And, uh, at, at the little four-way stop right around the corner from one fifty-five and Old Jackson Road, it's less than a mile or so away from where we, where we live. And it, I mean, my wife has to go back roads, up dirt roads and all to get around it already, leaving at six-thirty in the morning. And, uh, I mean, I'm sure many other folks are that, have that same problem. And we got Sun City already building houses from, from Teeman Road down to the creek, which is along on us, on Smoke Road. And those houses have not even been built yet, and we're talking about adding another two hundred and fifty. And then we got another hundred and seventy acres of land across the street from there, and they're talking about it there now, so. I mean, I'm, not to be ugly or nothing, you know, I just don't, I just don't see no, I always thinking how, how the roads going to handle all this. I mean, you know, it's, it's just, uh, it's out of, it's, it's out of control now.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that's, that's a major concern, you know. I understand people want to make money and build homes and I totally understand all that, but I just think that it could be a better location, you know, or a little better road development anyway for. That's about it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Brenda Cobb?
Brenda Cobb, three-two-two Smoke Road, Griffin, Georgia.
Yes, ma'am.
What the Berrys and the Scots have said is very true. The road has already got a lot of traffic on it. It's going to have a lot more traffic when Sun City finishes that. And I just don't know how, you know, and it's an agricultural area and we like the wildlife and we're concerned about what's going to happen there. And certainly what the gentleman just said about the traffic is very concerning, too. It's already, um, this is a rural county road. It's not made, most of it's a dirt road. We've got a church there, too. So, um, that was, you know, really what I was going to say, just I certainly endorse what the people coming before me have said.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
John Cobb?
Uh, John Cobb, three-two-two Smoke Road. Some of the concerns I have, one's the density. The entrance and exit on the bottom right-hand corner is right in front of my driveway. That means I can't go anywhere at eight o'clock in the morning if I want to make a left-hand turn because there's about a hundred houses emptying out there. So, two cars per house? Two hundred cars? Uh, the rest of them get the two entrances, uh, up the road. Is there going to be a homeowners association, uh, required and membership required for this development? Because if there isn't, then there's no maintenance of the green space or the wetlands or the nature trails. If, uh, you go around and ask for donations from your neighbors to keep it up, they don't want to participate. So you have to require a homeowners association with mandatory dues. Access from Smoke Road to East McIntosh is an acute angle, it's entirely inadequate, and it's going to require a traffic light. It's going to, people are going to want to go to the major, uh, employment centers, which are north. So they're going to want to go out the dirt road to Teeman to access nineteen forty-one and one fifty-five. There'll have to be a traffic light there, and it's had to be paved. The intersection of Old Jackson and, uh, North McDonald Road, one fifty-five, in the afternoons is horrendous. Traffic lights already necessary there, and that needs to be widened both directions. So, there's a number of, uh, problems before we get, uh, five hundred new kids in our school system. Also, Colonel Scott was talking about the drainage problem on there. Has there been an adequate EPA study to see what the impact is on the surrounding areas? I am downhill from that, uh, development. Is the water going to come across the road into, uh, Wolf Creek? And then that takes it into another lake, causing problems there? Has that been studied? So at present, um, like Mrs. Scott said, I think it needs to be a smaller development.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all who have signed up, uh, to speak this evening on this particular case.
Got any questions for the?
I do, um, I guess maybe some advisement. A lot of the points that were brought out by the concerned citizens seem to be very valid. Um, I know we cannot go back and forth and, and have dialogue, uh, just to ease their concerns. What, especially the traffic, because my parents lived on that side of town, and if I have to go that way, I, I have witnessed that. I really thought it was an accident one day. I was out there and I was talking to my husband, he's like, no, that's just the traffic. I was like, oh, okay. And I know that's state and out of the scope of county, um, as well. What, what can be done, if anything can be done, um, to address the concerns before we, you know, make a decision here?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think Newton's wanting to chime in. Newton, do you have anything to address, or you want me to handle that question and then turn it over to you?
Brad, the only thing first, let me apologize for not being there in person. I'm in Birmingham, but unable to participate, and I appreciate them while I was setting this up. Excuse me, by Zoom. We need to go through a little bit of the history of this property.
Okay.
And, uh, to go to, uh, Ms. Williams' point, the, the property and the traffic issues were addressed back in, as part of the approval in two thousands, in two thousand and six. The Hockett family who owned this property and who were relatives of the Chetums who owned the property that is now Sun City through, uh, Dundee Association, presented a resoning application to go to R one after and during the process of approval for Sun City Peach Street. And they proposed a significantly larger and denser development. They were denied and it wound up in litigation, and the Board of Commissioners at that time entered into a, uh, resolution, uh, that was ultimately approved by them to approve what has been shown by the, uh, current owner by LGI as a concept plan that sets out the number of lots that are permitted and the general compliance with the conservation subdivision requirements. The developer can do that plan right now as a matter of right. And while Ms. Scott's correct, the times change. Zoning decisions do not change unless there is a request for the change. And here, the only requested change is for essentially a change in the layout and design of the conservation subdivision. A conservation subdivision is a permitted use in R one. One of the requirements of the settlement agreement and resolution of the litigation was that the developer had the right to secure, if they chose, access to sewer through Sun City Peach Street's system. And to address the issues raised in Mr. Ross's letter, I believe there was also an easement obtained by the Hockett family to cross the railroad at that time. Ultimately, what's before the board now is simply a modification of the concept plan. Whether it's engineered or whether, whether it's received by engineering or whether it's not, ultimately, this is just looking at a modification of the plan that has already been approved. And if I am correct, Brad, if I'm, tell me if I'm incorrect, the number of lots has not been proposed to change?
You're correct, Newton, two forty-seven.
While, while Ms. Scott is right that the lots can be sized smaller, the overall density of the subdivision is one unit to roughly one point one-five acres, and that is consistent with all of our subdivision classes that have access to public water. So the issue presented is really the differential of the impact between the plan that was approved that was part of the settlement between the Hockett family and Spalding County in two thousand and six. What is the differential between that plan versus the plan that has been proposed? Or the revised plan that has been proposed? That is the legal issue. That is the legal issue presented where we have a credible opportunity to address those changes. But we do not have a legal basis to go back and readdress or relitigate or renegotiate absent consent of both parties, and thus far that has not, and I do not anticipate it being forthcoming. We do not have the legal ability to go back and change what we agreed to back in two thousand and six in this case because that still applies to this property. And I know that that is a legal opinion that probably does not sit well with many of the people who have spoken this evening, as they have the right to do, but that is the legalities that confront us in dealing with this application. That's all.
Newton, I do have a question. Can he do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With some of the concerns that the citizens have made, maybe some things, you know, like the young lady said, that was two thousand and six, is now twenty twenty-two. I, I know in oh-six the traffic was not like it is now. Of the things that they have mentioned, is there anything that we can say grace over? Is that out of our scope? Because some of the concerns are, are, in my opinion, are very valid.
Well, uh, Ms. Williams, the, the impact on traffic, uh, is, is documented, and the impact of traffic on the lot, the base fund number of lots, is probably about the same as it was before. What's, what's different now is not related to this track, but what has developed around it. But at the same time, Sun City, which was undeveloped in two thousand and six, I believe that was the year Sun City had its groundbreaking. Sun City, uh, didn't exist. Sun City traffic didn't exist. So, bottom line to it is, again, I, I want y'all to focus on this. If there are credible changes between what was approved and what was, uh, resolved in two thousand and six versus what the developer proposes now, then tangible, that's fair game. But we are going to be limited in what we can go back and do.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I will say that I would urge the developer to co, uh, meet and cooperate with both our boards and also the residents that, from which they've heard comments tonight, to address some of those, and as a sign of good faith to do so. And it certainly would not hurt for this board to make, uh, recommendations for things that address the concerns you just referenced.
Okay.
But let's, let's keep in mind that we have to draw the distinction between, between what we can legally impose versus what we may be able to develop as additional protections for, uh, the issues that have been raised voluntarily with the developer.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to add on, um, the thing, big things that I took from the, uh, questions from the citizens was runoff to the south and west. Those would be addressed during the hydrology study and the preliminary, uh, plat stage, so pre-development that comes in, but that would be addressed there, uh, when it comes down to it. Would probably be a good idea, if the applicant has any information on that right now, um, they might be able to be recognized by the board to come back. The increased buffers, um, you have the right to increase the buffers minimum from zoning, uh, believe for an R one subdivision, uh, for, or in the R one zoning with public water and public sewer, your side and rear yards, side yard setbacks are going to be twelve feet, your rear yard's going to be twenty-five. Um, so when it comes down to it, you can increase those if need be. Uh, the road concerns I addressed in, uh, my staff report, I do think a traffic study would be needed, the increased traffic volume especially on the dirt roads. Um, the roads would need to be, uh, upgraded to, uh, Spalding County specifications pending a road study. And then the HOA required, that is a requirement of, uh, the subdivision clause when it comes in. So once again, prior to approval of the final plat, they would have to have sample documents of their covenants and everything that comes in, and it would be stipulated that the, uh, HOA does maintain any and all green space.
You mentioned, I guess, a, a conversation that could potentially be held between the developer, the, the public, them, and then, um, governmental entities. Does that, I mean, is that something that I guess they just kind of work out amongst themselves, just good neighbors from the developers and, and whatnot?
Newton, I'm going to defer that question to you.
Not that we can mandate, but just as a show of good faith, that's something that they could, if they so chose, to do.
Brad, did you want me to handle that?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. I, I, I would suggest work session, but I wanted to make sure it was constitutional, so.
Ms. Williams, we, uh, and I, I commend, uh, Mr. and Ms. Scott because they were active participants in the process in two thousand and five and six. And, uh, many of the concerns that they addressed tonight, if I recall correctly, were raised at that time, as, as they were appropriately done. And what you heard tonight were articulate and well-presented concerns by the folks who own property in and around this. who own property in and around this development. And again, this area has changed in large part because of Sun City and because of the densities and the traffic that are present there. I would urge, I would urge the developer, having heard what's been said tonight, to see what can be addressed and what they are willing to do. And I would urge participation by our respective commissioners in that before this comes up before them.
Okay.
But again, bottom line to this is, this application really is nothing more than a request to change a development plan
Okay.
that does not impact density and that happened to be approved pursuant to a legal agreement in 2006.
Okay, all right.
But Brad, I would also like to say that what you just said regarding the concerns and the HOA and maintenance of the facilities and the restrictions that will govern soil erosion, sedimentation control, and border runoff and detention, all will have to be addressed through engineering drawings presented during the construction and design phase.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And doesn't this, I mean, still, it depends on whether or not they can get the sewage or what have you from Sun City, right? It's still not, it's still not set.
They, Mr. Chairman, I believe that the Hockett family entered into an agreement by which they would access and be able to utilize the Sun City sewer system. And the settlement agreement that was entered, or the development agreement that was entered back in 2006 specifically references the option to allow the developer to do so. Now, we have not seen the transfer documents from the Hocketts into LGI, but I have to assume that those rights and any agreement that has been entered between the Hocketts and the sewer entity, and keep in mind, there is a separate entity that was approved by the county with requisite funds to provide sewer service to Sun City. They would be, those agreements, I am certain, were part of the interests that were transferred from the Hocketts into LGI, as they would have been with any other developer, because they would be a valuable asset to the property. Now, the one part that we did not address specifically in the settlement agreement in 2006 was the Roosevelt Railroad. And my belief is, the representation was that the Hocketts were able to secure an easement under that railroad in order to be able to access the sewer package plant that serves Sun City.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Scott, I'm going to ask and address and confirm that. But the Roosevelt Railroad was very active in addressing the same issues you heard in Mr. Ross's letter in 2006.
Okay, thank you.
That's all, unless you have more questions.
Not from me.
I think I've probably asked the most and asked a lot. If there's no further discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we make a conditional approval of application 22-03S. And just as a side note with the motion, I hope that all the parties that are involved can at least come together and have some kind of workshop or some kind of session where we can get to meeting, meeting of the minds. I know we may not be able to make everybody happy, but at least, you know, be able to have some concessions. But the motion is to, with the conditional approvals as stated by staff, to approve said application.
So it's a motion to approve?
Conditionally approved with staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
That would be with the conditions proposed by Mr. Vaughn's report.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
And Ms. Williams, I might also add, as a condition, if you wanted to make certain that that meeting and consideration occurs, that can be part of your motion.
Okay, okay. I didn't know I had that power. Okay, all right. Well, then I would like to amend my emotion, my emotion, amend my motion to include the work session or workshop that all parties that have an interest, along with our county officials, have that meeting.
Now, in making that motion, I do want you to be clear, we cannot necessarily compel agreement.
Right.
But the discussion can be, can be required to be conducted.
Right. And that's my thought with the workshop, because you stand up, you present, and then there's no dialogue. So hopefully with the workshop, there'll be dialogue and a meeting of the minds somewhere, understanding we cannot make anything happen, but hoping that the neighbors can come together where everybody can at least be okay with what's going to happen. Because we, you know, this predates us on this board, and just hoping that we can get some good coming ground.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you have a motion on the table.
All right, do I have a second with conditions? You got a second?
I guess with the said application, the staff.
The staff recommendation.
What Ms. Williams have stated, maybe a workshop or something, get more involved and, you know, before we really complete, and let the other commissioners hear their side and, you know, they understand it better.
Yes, ma'am.
And a lot of the things that, a lot of the things that the different ones have said out there, maybe they would come to a conclusion to clear up some of this, you know, matter and just get on, you know, get together.
Yes, ma'am.
And they understand, but I think a workshop should be, not second that.
So that's a second. So all in favor?
Raise your hand. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is going to be special exception application 2204S. This is going to be located at 1710 Zebulon Road and located in land lot 120 of the Second Land District of Spalding County. Property is approximately 2.14 acres in size, further identified by parcel ID 23305013H as in hotel. So the current owner is Mr. Hunter Olin, Sr., resides at 1248 Woodcrest Drive in Macon, Georgia, 30210. The agent and developer is Big Peach Properties LLC, 500 Constitution Drive, Forsyth, Georgia, 31029. And the applicant requests permission via special exception to build and operate a car wash within the Tri-County Overlay District. Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, just as an overview, the underlying zoning for this property is enough to support it as a car wash, as a permitted primary use, you know, absent anything else. So if this were anywhere but an overlay district, it could come before our office just as a building permit. However, because it is in the Tri-County Overlay, car wash or use as a car wash is permitted via special exception only, so it's on a case-by-case basis that comes in. So the property is currently zone C1, highway commercial. Any retail or service business which does not have continuous unenclosed outside storage and which is not otherwise listed in Appendix 4, Article 12, Section 1203, is a permitted principal use, as illustrated. Subject property is governed by the Tri-County Overlay and stipulates this be a special exception application. If the special exception application is approved, the provisions of the Tri-County Overlay ordinance do stipulate that a concept plan or master site plan be submitted for approval to the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners for final approval prior to the application of any building or development permits. So this one's going to hit our grand slam boards, it's going to come before y'all, it's going to go before the Board of Commissioners with y'all's recommendation for denial or approval or conditional approval. And then it's going to go back before the Planning Commission and back before the Board of Commissioners one more time before it can be finalized that comes in. You see, the considerations of the special exception request must not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties. The proposed use will not be detrimental nor will the use cause any adverse effects on the adjacent properties. Being in the Tri-County Overlay, it is also required that it be, the parcels be interconnected. So I believe to the south, there is a liquor store, to the north, there's a restaurant, but those parcels will be interconnected, you know, per the Tri-County Overlay, so you'll be able to have the previous driveway cut. And GDOT has given verbal permission for them to access their property via the existing driveway cut. It must not be possible that depreciating effects or damages to the naming properties are greater than the benefits for the need of the special exception. Staff does not anticipate any depreciating effects, rather than having another developed property in the C1 zoning would actually cause an appreciation effect to the other like-zone properties that are down there. By developing the vacant lot with a quality business, the proposed use will improve the area. Must not have an adverse effect on existing uses. Currently, it's roughly over two acres in size, and it's been lawfully recorded, a lawfully recorded lot of record, and has been, remained vacant for years. So it does have a little piece of a, I guess, detention pond that was on it that will be reworked with the engineered drawings that will come before the master, before the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. Staff does have a couple stipulations, though, that the special exception be non-transferable and the use as a car wash or any change in use as a car wash shall require it to come back before the boards for zoning approval at that time, or at least it be conditioned for use as a car wash only. The special exception shall be conditionally approved pending the concept plan approval, if approved by the Board of Appeals tonight, recommended by, or approved by the Board of Commissioners upon y'all's recommendation. We stipulate that they must also approve the concept plan for the special exception to be valid. And then GDOT approval will be needed to utilize existing curb cut along US 19. As I stated, we've got a verbal confirmation from GDOT, I have nothing in writing, you know, at the time of this report, so. Applicant is here, and which county manager?
Listen to the applicant first.
Yes.
Hey, how are y'all doing? My name is Wes Con, I reside at 500 Constitution Drive, Forsyth, Georgia. I got something for you guys.
We're glad to be here tonight, thank y'all for hearing us. This is one of our air fresheners. You can get one of these every time you come, too.
Thank you.
I've got behind me Todd Rivers and 131 Park Drive, Forsyth, Georgia. I'm the talker, he's the doer. So anything, you know, that involves building construction, he knows all that, but I can tell you about it. I've also got our other two owners, Andrew and Nick. Mr. Big Chick, both of them, one owns the one in Forsyth, the other one owns the one in front of the Kroger here, so if y'all recognize him, that's Mr. Big Chick. We're just very thankful to be here. We opened our first wash in Forsyth back in July of last year, and it has just absolutely exploded. And we are just, we're actually under construction, one in Jackson, working on this one, and we got one in McDonough as well. And so kind of our goal is to build that brand so that whenever folks are using us, they can go to every one of them. And it's been fun. We employ about 22 people, most of them are high schoolers. We work with a work-based learning program. And I'll tell you, one thing that we pride ourselves on is, most of the businesses around us have help wanted signs. We have over 100 applicants in our system. And that's because we do a lot of special things for our employees. Do you have the flash drive by chance? We got a little drone video, I'll kind of show you guys. So this isn't like a self-serve car wash, this is the one that you drive through and you pull around to the vacuums. We offer free spray, free towels, we have rug, carpet cleaners, we have the air hoses, we have air fresheners. We literally have everything you need at a car wash. And when we started building this, we talked about what we liked and didn't like of other car washes and what they were missing, and we tried to bring everything. Just do the number one, the video. Yep. So this was on a, this was a couple weeks ago on a Saturday at the wash. And as you can see, we stay pretty busy. This is the neighborhood hangout spot, at least for 10 minutes.
As long as it's only 10 minutes.
We typically select where those last vehicles are entering the road, it's about three minutes through the wash. Most, everybody vacuums, but they don't vacuum every time. So I don't know, maybe what?
Yeah, one every three.
Twenty-five, 30% of people use the vacuums, and when it's cold, nobody uses the vacuums. They go straight through there and go on. So I've just got kind of some cool stuff, you can go to two and then three straight down. This is one of our girls at the kiosk, so we always have people at the kiosk that basically help with the washes. We have the unlimited plan, so starting at 20 bucks a month, you can come every day. And that's what people love, and our highest package is 40. That's Mr. Ron, our GM, he is the face of our brand, and that's our mascot. He doesn't have a name yet, we're still working on that. So it's just a promo pic. Those are our air fresheners, so we have, we always change. Peach and Black Ice are our favorite, too. We probably give out 5,000 air fresheners a month. And so we've started with some new flavors, so we try to, you know, change that up for people. One thing that we do is we very much so appreciate our law enforcement, so all local, city and county patrol vehicles get their cars washed for free, and they can come as many times as they want. And we will do the same thing up here as well, this is just another picture. Our sheriff, Sheriff Freeman, is very finicky, so he likes his cars clean. This is a group of special education students, they come every week, and in their class, they're kind of cooped up, so they look for local businesses to come to. And so they help us fill our spray bottles, do our towels, and they have fun interacting with our customers. It's a good place for them, you know, to kind of get outside. All right, so this is different, you guys have probably never seen this before, we actually did a haunted car wash in October. And we sold out every night, we turned away hundreds of people every night, and this thing became a hit. And you can, this was our promo picture. This thing got over a million views on Facebook. It reached California, and people came from all over. And actually, I think somebody in y'all's office came, because that was one of the comments that we got when we started this process. So these are two TikTok videos, I want you to see the haunted car wash. This is just somebody that came through that randomly posted this. And that's me in the Michael Myers costume. So our goal for this was, all of our proceeds went to local charities. So there was a, fortunately, a little girl that died of brain cancer, and one of the nights, all the proceeds went to her family. Fishing team got all the proceeds one night, FBLA got the proceeds one night, and there were several others that did. So it was just a way for us to kind of, you know, have fun, give the community something to give back, to, you can go to 13. So every quarter, the reason we have such a, I guess, our employees are just so good to us, we do a quarterly team event. So we run out to skating rink, bowling alley, whatever, and we invite our team members and their families to do that. So that's kind of our goal here. We've got some really good paying jobs, our site managers make over six figures. And we start out, high schoolers at $10 an hour and full-timers are at 12. So when it, it's kind of become the spot that all the high schoolers want to work at. So that's something we do for them. This is us just receiving a Goldenell Award for Forsyth Chamber for beautification. All right, so I've worked at Publix through high school and college, so I've been brainwashed with customer service, and I'll tell you, there's a lot more to car washes than just washing a car. And I think that's why we are probably the fastest-growing brand around here, and I can tell you, we're not a corporate conglomerate, we don't come from much of money, we've just been very blessed and the Lord's provided for us, and we're moving. One of the things that our controllers have to do is they have to do something on your windshield when you come through. If it's Valentine's, you know, if it's February, they're doing hearts, just whatever they want to draw. This smiley face has gotten, has just made so many people's day, and I always tell my folks, you never know what people are going through. Something like that is, you know, and we get these all the time, so there's one, there's a couple other Facebook reviews. This is one we actually just got today, I thought was pretty cool. So we, a lot, it takes, you know, some people a long time to come check you out, these express car washes are, they're a newer concept, so people are scared to come. This was their first time coming, live on a farm, and just couldn't, I guess, couldn't believe how good the wash did, so that was, that was pretty neat. All right, this is Mr. Ron, so he is our director of customer service, and he'll be training every employee. If we get this spot approved, he's going to train every employee that works here as well. But this guy gets hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of shout-outs. I mean, it is truly amazing. And he is, he's our general manager and does a wonderful job. This was something special to us, so in the last two months, both of those kids that are So la, last, uh, in the last two months, both of those kids that are next to our mascot, uh, little girl unfortunately is not doing good. She's got a brain tumor and a little boy is actually getting better, but both fighting childhood cancer. So what we did is we, uh, did fundraisers for them. We raised over $12,000 for their families. And, uh, it's pretty neat. Basically what we do is, is we held a fundraiser that says for every car that comes through, we'll donate $5 to the family. And even our unlimited members, you don't even have to pay. You just show up and drive through, you're doing it. And so, uh, on one of the days, we, we, we washed 848 cars. So, um, pretty, pretty powerful. And, you know, I look at professional athletes and their platform is being able to give backs on the field. That's our platform to give back.
Absolutely.
So, um, I just kind of, we don't share any of this information publicly, but I felt necessary because we're from Forsyth, small town. I love Griffin's, another small town. Just, our goal is to, you know, kind of raise the bar on what y'all are used to and, and do things a little different. I feel as if we're the Chick-fil-A of car washes. I really, really do. Um, this is, this is just some, some facts about us. We have 13,000 followers on social media. So our brand is, is booming. It's growing. Um, we raised, in, in the eight months we've been open, we have donated 27,833 dollars in the community. We giving back to Backpack Buddies Band, football team, the hospital, baseball team, fishing teams. We've done so many things. So anyways, I know that because of where the lot lays, we had to go through some extra measures, but we're really appreciative of, uh, of the opportunity and, and thankful to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Wes Cohn, is that right?
That's, yes, sir.
Is that you? Correct. Todd Rivers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Brian McCrayne?
Guess not.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any questions?
No. No, I have none.
You don't have any?
I don't have any. They did a great job presenting.
Outstanding job. Any questions from staff?
No. No. None whatsoever.
Do we have a motion on application 22-04-S?
I move approval of, um, application 22-04-S with the staff recommended conditions. Okay. My second motion on this variance.
All in favor? That's all.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Mr. Chairman, next item on our list is going to be special exception application 22-05-S. This property is located at 123 Sandy Lane in Land Lot 45 of the First Land District of Spalding County. Property consists of a total of approximately 3.03 acres. It is further identified by parcel number 279-02-029 L is in Lima. Uh, current owner is John James or J.J. Henderson, uh, 500 Fairview Road, Brooks, Georgia, 30205. No developer or, or, uh, agent is associated with this. Um, it's a landowner only. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, this is a special exception ultimately to place a mobile home or a manufactured home within the AR1 zoning district. Um, there are factors that staff believes are important with respect to medical hardship, but as the, uh, uh, application stands, ultimately this is going to be for a permanent site. So the special exception to add a, uh, mobile home in the AR1 zoning is ultimately our determination of what the request is. But a little bit of the background, the applicant's requesting the special exception in order to place a new 2022 model manufactured Class A home on the property within the AR1 district. The proposed home will have 2,254 square feet of heated space. The total cost, cost of the home will be approximately 195,900. The manufacturer Scott Built Homes has certified that the dwelling will meet the minimum requirement of a four 12, a true 412 roof pitch. The home is constructed to HUD standards, which will surpass minimum building code. It is also an Energy Star rated home, which will likely have a more efficient energy build than a traditional stick and brick, uh, built home of the same, same size. The subject property was carved off from the adjacent property in 2021, July of 2021, in order for the applicant to live next to his parents. It is compliant with the underlines, underlying zoning district and it has been vacant since it was created. The subject property is currently zoned AR1. The lot is a legal lot of record, having been recorded in plat book 27, page 335, on July 15th of 2021. Um, section 503B18 of the Spalding County UDO states that a Class A manufactured home with a heated floor area of at least 1,500 square feet is allowed, but only via the special exception process within the AR1 zoning district. Section 413G of the UDO, uh, identifies the criteria, uh, for what is necessary for adding a, um, a mobile home, or excuse me, a manufactured home in AR1 zoning. So we take into account the number and quality of conventionally struck, uh, constructed site-built dwellings. Um, right now, we don't have a computer database of this in the county, so it all has to be done by hand. Um, the number and quality of conventionally constructed, uh, site-built dwellings, within a half mile radius of the property, there's a total of 64 prop, parcels. Review of these house, uh, these parcels reveal the following. 26.5% of the parcels are vacant or have a non-residential use. So that's 17 parcels. 62.5% of the homes are conventionally constructed, traditional stick and brick built homes. That's a total of 40 of the, uh, parcels. 11% of the homes are manufactured homes. That's a total of seven. Uh, existing development in the general area, surrounding development area is largely residential or agricultural in nature, while 17, uh, 17 parcels are vacant. The remainder contains single-family residential dwellings. Uh, the average home size of all homes, either kind of type of construction in the study area is 1,872 square feet. The average size of a conventionally constructed home in the same, in the half-mile radius is 2,096 square feet. And the average size of a manufactured home in the same area is 1,089 square feet. Um, there are no proposed developments being considered in the general area, so there's nothing that this would be, um, you know, yeah, there's nothing that would be in conflict with this request. The area is primarily residential in nature with a, a clear trend towards conventionally built homes. Uh, there are no existing deed or covenant restrictions on the tracks within the general area nor the subject property. Um, there's no real, uh, single architectural style in the general area, predominantly a mixture of conventionally constructed homes that are brick, wood, or vinyl exteriors. Um, proposed home will have a similar setback in architectural appearance to other homes in the areas. Um, the age and condition, conventional home construction, uh, in the area dates, uh, in the range from 1910 to 2019. Manufactured home construction in the area dates from 1969 to 1999, and the average construction date of all homes is going to be 1996. So I've also identified, the applicant has listed a medical hardship as the need for a special exception. Um, his father is actually suffering from, uh, stage four, uh, cancer, I believe. Um, and the county does provide for a special exception for use of a manufactured home Class B or Class C as a temporary home as an accessory structure on the main parcel in the event of a medical hardship. So Class B is going to be your single wide type, uh, you know, uh, construction. Class C is going to be your RV camper or fifth wheel. As illustrated, um, this applic, application is for a Class A or multi-wide manufactured home. So while this is going to be a permanent, uh, request on a standalone parcel, that's why staff has evaluated it as it is, but I do believe that the, uh, medical need is relevant to the request. Um, so when it comes down to it. So the special exception guidelines must not be detrimental to the use of adjacent properties or the general neighborhood. Staff does not anticipate any detrimental qualities from the proposed use. Um, it is actually larger than the average, um, home size in the area and the construction to, uh, class of the, uh, of the home is actually above minimum building code grade, uh, when it comes down to it. Uh, proposed home to be built is, like I said, it is constructed to HUD standards and it is Energy Star rated. Um, at 2,254 square feet of heated livable space is significantly larger than the minimum required of 1,500 square feet. And with residential construction costs being approximately 167 dollars per square foot right now, this is probably the most bang for your buck you're going to be able to get for a house in this area. Um, if approved, this home will have a more, uh, more efficient use of the applicant's dollars, um, than it would be if he were to build a traditional stick and brick home. If evaluated solely based on the request for the new manufactured home and zoning, the application is compliant. If evaluated based on the request for a medical hardship, the application is not compliant with our, or with our, uh, code as it calls for a permanent structure on a standalone parcel rather than a temporary structure and the fact that it's a different medical class. Um, an option, so commentary from staff, an option, you know, that, uh, applicant may have would be to re, uh, replat the parent parcel and then apply for a variance to apply, uh, have a, uh, permanent home, uh, as the medical hardship that comes in. But staff, uh, to recap on the summary, all homes in the area, uh, percent of parcels with a home on it, 73%. Um, average year built 1996, average home square, uh, square footage, 1872. Conventional homes in the area are 62 and a half percent. And, uh, uh, new, uh, average year built for all conventional homes is 2,004. Average square foot in size is 2,096. Manufactured homes in the area, 11% of the total parcels, uh, average year built for all of them is 1978 with an average square foot in size, 1,089. Um, and this for the staff recommendation, staff recommends the, uh, or interprets the ultimate goal of the application to install the new manufactured home as a permanent resident on a, a residence on an undeveloped parcel, an AR1 zoning district. Um, there's a clear trend towards conventional construction, so this is a little bit outside of what the parameters of code are. So, um, within the area of study, uh, the application is inconsistent with the trend of traditional stick and brick built homes that are in there. Um, decision to approve or deny completely rests with the discretion of the board. Um, but if staff had to be forced to make an opinion, staff would recommend for approval.
Understood.
And the applicant is here. So, Mr. John Henderson?
Yes, sir. Hello, Board, our Commission. Nice to, uh, meet you. I'm John Henderson, 123 Sandy Lane, Brooks, Georgia. Um, I come before you to, uh, ask for this variance due to, um, as you know, in the current economy, today, we did a floor plan for a 1,900 square foot house, uh, to be stick-built. When I got the bill saying $445,000, I said, no way. I can't afford that. I don't make that kind of money. We started looking at manufactured homes. We found this beautiful home out of, uh, Columbus, Georgia. Um, it's $190,000 affordable. Um, it would give us, um, a place to live close to my parents. Both of my parents are here. They came to, um, with us to see about this and due to their current health issues, love to get down onto the family farm and be able to, be able to take care of them. Um, we are the primary caregivers to mom and dad. So work a full-time job, come home, try to help out, do everything we need to do at the farm, and then go back to our regular home. If I could be adjacent to them, it'd make a life a lot easier for everyone. Uh, I just asked for, um, your consideration on the approval of the variance so I can have a beautiful home on the farm, have the animals, and be close to mom and dad. And, um, that's it for me.
And my wife asked. Any questions for Mr.?
No.
Any questions?
No.
Ms. Carrie Henderson?
I'm, um, Carrie Henderson at 123 Sandy Lane, Brooks, Georgia, 30205. I am certified in BLS and ALS certification, which means that if anything happens to my mama or my papa, I'm across the pasture. It can take me 60 seconds to get to them to where an ambulance can take up to 15 minutes. You all know that could be a matter of life and death. They are in their 80s. We ha, we're there every weekend taking care of the family farm. We take care of all of the property, the horses, the donkeys. I don't want anything happen to them either. Okay? But most importantly, it's my mama and my papa, and I'd like to keep them around, um, for as long as possible. They're all I've got. Um, and like my husband said, we are the primary caregivers and there's nothing that I wouldn't do for them. Right now, currently, we are 40 minutes away from them. So by the time we get to them, it could be too late. And again, Papa suffers from stage four B-cell, um, lymphoma, which Brad, you were just about right there. Um, my, uh, mama has a pacemaker. She also has essential tremors. Um, we do, um, medication checks. We, um, do gate training. Um, there's thing, we, um, help with their medications, things that home health will not provide.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? So thank you.
Any questions?
No. No questions.
There's no one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve application 21-65-S. My second motion on this variance.
One second. What was the application number?
22-05-S.
22-65-S, I'm sorry. John Henderson.
Okay. Second in favor?
Second.
Motion's approved.
Awesome. Mr. Chairman, the, uh, next item we have on the agenda is going to be application Property location is 525 Bethany Road, Land Lot 10 of the First Land District of Spalding County. And the property is approximately 202.55 acres in size. It is further identified by parcel number 276-01005-H as in hotel. Current owner is Twin Valley LLC, 235 Corporate Center, Swedelet 100, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. There is no agent or developer associated with this project. Uh, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, the proposed, uh, use before you, or the application before you requests a special exception to construct a barn dominium-style house within the AR1 district. The subject property currently has a barn with office space that was constructed in the year 1995. It is the applicant's intent to convert the barn and office into a barn dominium-style home. Um, so compliance with the zoning ordinance and standards, the property is currently zoned AR1. Barn dominium, barn dominiums are permissible in the AR1 zoning district via the special exception process only. The, uh, code further stipulates that the minimum lot size to house a barn dominium must be five acres. So at 202 acres, this thing blows that out the water. Um, the minimum front yard setback is 200 feet. Roof pitch and, uh, of the dwelling with a minimum vertical rise of four, uh, four feet for every 12 feet of ru, horizontal run, so a true 412 roof pitch. Uh, porch depth of at least six feet located on the front of the structure with a roof pitch and a minimum, uh, uh, roof pitch of 312 over the, uh, porch section. At least 25% of each side of the structure shall be constructed of conventional exterior materials. Excuse me. Exterior columns and/or posts must be at least six by six inches in size or greater if required by applicable building code. Currently, building code requires six by six, uh, right now, unless we go up in weight. Um, all industrial or garage bay doors must be located on the side or back of the structure and the roof of the structure may be finished with a type of shingle commonly used in conventional residential construction or a metal consisting of 26-gauge steel or .040 aluminum standing seam. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Um, so the applicant has submitted conceptual drawings that are consistent with this design. Um, so the application is consistent with that. They will have to retrofit some of the exterior of the building since it's already standing. Um, the definitely, the inside will have to be, um, you know, uh, changed up as well. So building permits will be required by our office to conduct that change if approved here, if approved here and the, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting. and the Board of Commissioners meeting. So must not be detrimental to the use of development of adjacent properties or the general neighborhood. The proposed use will not be detrimental nor, you know, cause any adverse effects on adjacent properties. You know, after all, the structure's been standing since nineteen ninety-five with no ill will towards the adjacent properties. It must not be possible that it will have depreciating effects or damages to the neighboring properties greater than the benefits or needed of the special exception. Staff doesn't anticipate any of the detrimental effects and the need is more of a personal want just to have a different style house than to go out and build one, you know, made out of brick that looks like it's got columns. Must not adversely affect existing uses, existing uses of the property as agricultural in purpose. It's roughly two-hundred-and-two-and-a-half acres in size, a hundred and ninety-seven-and-a-half acres more than the minimum required by code for this proposed use. Proposed elevation and floor plan in the packet is compliant with code and what we have on record of what a barn dominium should look like for Spalding County. Application is compliant with the requirements of this ordinance and if approved, applicant will be able to proceed with an application for building permit subject to the requirements of that process and any other conditions, you know, implemented by the boards. Staff does recommend approval of this application and the applicant-owner is here tonight for further questions.
Any questions on staff?
No.
Or?
No.
Has anybody signed up?
Who is the applicant?
Doug Adams?
Doug Adams?
I don't have to speak.
Okay, yeah, no, you don't have to, sir.
I'm happy to.
We have a motion for application twenty-two zero seven S.
I make a motion, application twenty-two dash zero seven S on the staff.
You're making a motion to approve?
To approve.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Approval. All right. Application twenty-two zero seven S is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item up for business tonight is going to be application twenty-two oh six S. Property is located at Zero Jackson Road, land lot eighty of the second land district of Spalding County. Subject property is approximately sixty-seven-point-four-six-five acres in size. The current owner is LNC Partnership, LLP, and Tri-Lake Forest, LLC. Thirteen-sixty-five McDonough Parkway, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five three. Agent is Taylor English-Dumas, LLP, sixteen-hundred Parkwood Circle, Suite two hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three nine. The applicant is requesting permission via special exception to allow for a country club-themed subdivision with thirty-nine buildable lots, less than two acres in size. The proposed name of the subdivision is Lake Forest. The applicant has not yet indicated a specific architectural theme yet for the neighborhood, so country club theme has been recommended in this assessment with the amenities listed. The property is currently zoned R-two, single-family residential, and it does have some conditions. Subject property has been before the boards before as application oh-four fifty-nine S and oh-four twenty-two Z back in the year two thousand and four. However, the applicant no longer wishes to develop the subject property as a phase of Emerald Forest, which is the subdivision to the south, and wishes to become its own entity. GDOT has also relocated Highway one fifty-five since the application said been before the boards, which also reduced the actual parent tract in size of the subject property. The application before you will create a new neighborhood if approved. So compliance with zoning ordinance and development standards. Appendix four, Article eight, Section eight oh four B states that the minimum lot area within the R-two zoning district shall be defined by the Spalding County Health Department, but in no case less than two acres unless a special exception allowing a reduction in lot size to one acre is approved pursuant to Section four thirteen. We've listed the criteria for Section four thirteen that's in there. Common space shall be required in all subdivisions for which a special exception is granted to allow development at a density of less than one dwelling per two acres. Common space shall meet the following criteria. A minimum of twenty-five percent of the total acreage within the subdivision shall be included in common space. This application is compliant with that. Common space may include any amenity area located within the subdivision and for purposes of this section, an amenity shall be any improvement provided for the recreation of the residents. There are amenities that are provided. We will get to them in a second. Designated wetland areas may be included within the common space in an amount of not more than ten percent of the total acreage of the parent tract. There are some flood and wetland areas that are here, but they actually do not add up more than ten percent of what's illustrated on the actual plan, so that comes in. So all the common space that's there is actually above and beyond the ten percent that they get credit for and as it's illustrated outside the flood zone or wetland zone. Common space shall not include any area plotted out or included with any lot of the subdivision. So there's actually no common area that's encroaching upon any of the individual lots. There are individual lots, however, if you'll note on your plat, on your concept plat, there are forty-one buildable lots, but two of them are actually parks that are identified by the amenities. So that's why there's only thirty-nine buildable lots for houses. The country club subdivision theme does have some design criteria. Brick, stone, or stucco on the front facade for each dwelling is required. Architectural design must also include at least two of the following, at least three sides, brick, stone, stucco, or hardy plank facades, porticoes, transom windows, detailed balusters, impediments, masonry chimneys, or Q-ins. Common space design criteria, so shall be required. Common space shall not be located more than five-hundred feet from the boundary of any residential lot. That's also another reason why the individual parks are situated around the different areas of the subdivision to meet this requirement. Extensively developed recreation areas are to be completed prior to street acceptance. So if approved tonight, if approved by the Board of Commissioners, this will also come back before the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners as preliminary and final plats. Common space must include at least three of the following, tennis courts, improved walking trails, playgrounds that are commercial grade, a swimming pool, or a clubhouse. So the amenities that are actually identified in this plat, you've got, excuse me, you've got the pavilion, which is identified as their clubhouse. There is a commercial-grade playground identified. There is a walking trail that runs along the eastern border of the property and the lake, along the common courts. Raised beds for the community garden. There's a dog park and two open airspace parks that come in. Must have at least four feet wide or four-foot minimum-wide sidewalks. Street scapes and designs, which include street trees and only those species allowed, enumerated in code, must have curb and gutter. Traffic calming devices such as center green islands and speed tables shall be there. Sidewalks with a paved width exceeding four feet or enhanced or larger tree plantings in the streetscape will also qualify as design criteria. At least one of the following shall be included in the subdivision design. At least one-hundred-feet setbacks or fifty feet if the yard is going to be sotted entirely around the home. Extensive landscaping or on individual lots or significant subdivision entrance for the feature. This feature has not been identified yet, but staff would anticipate that the fifty-foot, fifty-foot front yard setbacks with the yards being sodded as it comes down to it, probably being the final choice before this hits preliminary plat. Pursuant to the Spalding County Comprehensive Plan, the request is consistent with the plan and the future development map classification of rural neighborhood, which specifies that there shall be an exception for special exceptions or conservation subdivisions within the rural neighborhood classification. So as long as this application is compliant with the code set forth, they are allowed to go below the density of one house per two acres from the underlying zoning. Transportation and following information, so you're looking at, based off of the number of lots, you're looking at an AM peak hour of twenty-nine trips, PM peak hour of thirty-nine trips, Saturdays and Sundays about thirty-seven, thirty-seven on Saturdays, thirty-four on Sundays, and total weekday of three-hundred-and-seventy-three trips per day to the lot. Once again, going off census information, based off of thirty-nine livable or buildable lots when one-point-two children per home, you would see an approximate increase of forty-six children in the school system with the development of these thirty-nine lots. Portions of this site are within the flood zone. Site is not located within a protected watershed, S-two watershed overlay or water protection map. The site is within the recharge area for groundwater on the S-three overlay map. Compliance with the zoning standards that comes in, minimum twenty-five percent of the total acreage. It is compliant with the country club subdivision that comes in. Street scapes and sidewalks will be required. Applicant has not submitted any proposed home plans for the neighborhood. The applicant has indicated that approximately sixteen-point-nine-seven acres or twenty-five-point-fifteen percent of the common space is provided, so that's above our twenty-five percent minimum. Amenities indicated on the concept plan include an open space or park by the entrance, which includes a pavilion with fire pit, playground, and mail kiosk, a wildlife observation platform overlooking the lake, a walking trail, a wildlife preserve with observation area, a passive park, community garden with raised beds, and an area for a dog park are the amenities that total out what the neighborhood will provide. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with all the zoning conditions that could be met with this site plan. Common space areas are within five-hundred feet of any lot and front on public rights of way. Some of the items are to be addressed in the preliminary plat stage and/or construction phase, so like your setbacks, your soil tests, et cetera. Staff does recommend conditional approval of the application with the following conditions. Projects shall adhere to the country club-themed design criteria except as otherwise provided in these conditions. The development of the property shall be in substantial compliance as determined by the director with conditions from the boards with the concept plan submitted with the applications. The development shall comply with the streetscape ordinance per county specifications indicating size and type of trees proposed. Prior to the final plat approval, a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions shall be recorded governing the use of lots and appearance of dwellings, in a sense creating neighborhood covenants and an HOA. The lake and common space shall be owned and maintained by the homeowners association at all times. The amenity lot number thirty-eight shown on the concept plan shall include the mail kiosk, raised bed, community garden, pavilion with picnic table, fire pit, and commercial grade playground. The pavilion shall be deemed a clubhouse. All lots with fifty-foot setbacks will be sodden. Front porches or decks shall be finished in character with all the homes. Vinyl siding shall be prohibited. All dwellings shall be constructed of at least two of the following materials on all facades, cement fiber boards, stone, stucco, brick, or real wood. Porches shall be underpinned. The development shall include a walking trail running from the observation platform shown on the concept plan at the northeast corner of Lot twenty-nine to the common boundary between Lots twenty-three and twenty-four. And all homes shall be a minimum of eighteen-hundred square feet of heated space if one-story and twenty-two-hundred square feet of minimum heated square, square space, minimum heated square foot space if two-story. And applicant and agents are here, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name's Stephen Jones. I'm here today on behalf of the applicants. It's a pleasure to appear before you as always. My address is sixteen-hundred Parkwood Circle, Suite two hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three three eight. And I'm with the law firm of Taylor English-Dumas. Staff's presentation was spot-on. We stand behind and consent to all of staff's recommended conditions. As staff alluded to, this is a development that was approved in two thousand and four. The concept, what this application does is seek to modify the conditions of approval that were imposed in two thousand and four as well as update the concept plan that was presented during that two thousand and four zoning. The yield, the number of lots, is still the same. That's thirty-seven lots. What this concept plan does that's different than the concept plan that was approved or was part of the two thousand and four zonings was that this one, and you'll see, next slide, please, Eva. Next slide. This was the original concept plan from two thousand and four when this was approved for a country club neighborhood. You'll see thirty-seven lots. This incorporated a walking trail, but it only incorporated one amenity area. And you'll see that to the north with the amenities required under the special exception country club. So what our concept plan does is, and also in this concept plan, there was an entrance from the Emerald Forest subdivision and an entrance from one fifty-five. This was intended in two thousand and four to be Phase Two of the Emerald Forest subdivision. This application changes that and makes this its own standalone subdivision with its own entrance and also adds a slew of other amenities based on changing markets as well. Next slide, please, Eva. As a nuance, in two thousand and four, there were a set of conditions imposed which this application also seeks to change. Principally, the biggest one of concern is that there was a set of concept plans attached in that two thousand and four zoning that included a house size that's, or a house rendering that does not track the current market, and so we want to pull that out. You'll see it on the next slide, please. So this is eighteen-sixty-seven is revised. We want to move away from that and go towards more of a craftsman style with, as staff recommended conditions suggest, a mixture of materials as the market's driving right now, you see of new craftsman-style homes. I also want to market this in a high price range for the area. Think it will be a great development, especially with the host of amenities that we're adding. Next slide, please. So here's the new concept plan. You'll see that the streetscape, the street plan follows the generally same layout that there was in two thousand and four. But what this has different is the walking trail is longer and there are three small parks with dedicated passive uses as well as a wildlife observation area. You can see those on the next few slides. So you'll see this is, this on the left is the large amenity area. All the amenity area lots are numbered, and that's just to make it easier to convey to the HOA once it's all built out. But that top-left one includes a pavilion, a playground, a fire pit, and then the start of the walking trail and also the central mailbox unit, which the post office requires now. So the walking trail starts there. You'll see it on the right, previous slide, please. You'll see it on the picture to the right, continues and winds around the lake to a wildlife observation platform which fronts the lake. Next slide, please. Then that walking trail comes down into the open space that we're calling the wildlife preserve because it will remain wooded and it gives you a nice end to the walking trail as you come up through the cul-de-sac. And that'll be a dedicated easement area maintained by the HOA between Lots twenty-six and twenty-five. Next slide, please. Here are some of the other amenity areas scattered throughout that you couldn't really see on the larger concept plan. There's a community garden, which is a feature that we've added in other developments that's been really successful. So that's a gated-in area with raised platform kind of gardens that, a community garden. Dog park as well. You can see the proposed fenced area. And then a passive park all the way in the south, and that's just an open space, you know, kid play area, ball field kind of deal. Next slide, please, and then you'll see a list of proposed conditions. Eva, if you would back up a few slides to the overall concept plan. Be happy to address any questions the board may have. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve any time I may have remaining to rebut any other comments that may be made after my presentation ends.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one other point of order. They have, applicant has lodged and we have received a copy of their constitutional objection.
Okay.
And we have copies for distribution if y'all would like to take a look at it.
No one else is signed up?
Nobody else is signed up, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any questions on the staff?
No. None that I can think of. Just to, to help me just, because I heard it used a couple of times tonight. What is the country club theme? Am I saying it wrong, or country club?
Mr. Chairman, felt the board members, we have three special exception subdivisions that are themed in our ordinance. One is the country club theme, where it's got the section that's listed in the staff report, the Section four thirteen, and all the additions that are there. One is an estate lot, so it's actually made for, it's actually like a farm lot where you would have, true meaning, you would still have some common space that's there, but you would have development concentrated in a small area, your density neutral for your elements of zoning that comes in. But for the farm lots or estate lots, you'd have a big house and then your green space would be farmland or pasture land where you could have animals or, you know, crops growing that are there. And there's a third one without having to go to MUNI code. I do not have that one committed to memory right now. I believe it's age-restricted possibly, so kind of like it. But those are, those are your three special exception subdivisions, and those are the three acceptable themes to get a density greater than one home per two acres per Spalding County's code.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Now, the water and sewage for this one? Now, the water and sewage for this one, how is that, I mean, is this county providing?
This will be public water, and it will be, I believe it's septic systems.
Yes, correct, that's why you've got a one-acre lot prescribed by the health department.
Got you, okay.
That kind of confused me at first, because it mentioned sewer, and I was like, oh, okay, but I'm thinking, I know that it's probably going to be septic. Okay, I saw that.
Truth be told, Mr. Chairman, I probably copied and pasted over that when I did my staff report, so that one's probably on me.
That's okay, that's okay, I was just wondering. Any other questions?
All right. I don't have any.
Neither do I, thank you. Motions on application twenty-two zero six S?
Will that staff condition approve?
Yes, please. Condition.
That's what I was listening for. Okay, with staff condition approval, I make a motion with the condition on this said application to approve it.
I second. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Application twenty-two zero six S is approved.
And Mr. Chairman, this is the application we've been looking for, this is the last one of the night, so special exception twenty-two oh eight S. Size and location of the property, property is located at eleven forty-three Vineyard Road, within land lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and fifty-eight of the third land district of Spalding County. Property comprises a total of approximately one hundred and nineteen point seven five eight acres, further identified by parcel ID two-six-zero zero-two-zero-three. Current owner is Spalding Vineyard one twenty LLC, twenty-two seventy North Jeff Davis Drive, Fayetteville, Georgia, three oh two one four. No current agent of record listed. Proposed use, applicant is requesting a special exception to allow a conservation subdivision with forty-eight single-family detached residences on lots ranged in size from one to one point six one acres. The proposed name of the subdivision will be Glacier Farms. This request is for a density of one unit per two point four nine acres of land to the parent tract, so the overall density of the conservation subdivision will be above the standard, standard one unit per two acres from the salt underlying our two zoning district. There is, and, there is a concurrent zoning application. Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, a little bit of background on this. Previous administration had allowed them, or had ordered them, to go through a rezoning application prior to a special exception application. Instead of drawing everything out for months, applicant would like to go before and have both applications wind up at the BOC at the same time. Unfortunately, holidays hit, the, the second cancellation of the, or the second meeting that was, of the BOC was canceled in December. We unfortunately missed quorum in February, so the applicant has had to wait a little bit longer, but the overall intent was to get both applications at the same BOC meeting at the same time. So there is a concurrent rezoning application with this that will be heard, or, excuse me, that has been recommended by the planning commission, and you saw this case for a variance with respect to the length of the cul-de-sac, I believe it was back in November of last year, that came in, so. But the space does have approximately, excuse me, the proposed open space of the property does have approximately fifty-three point one nine acres, and consists of forty-four percent of the total parent tract, so therefore it's above our forty percent minimum. The applicant has not indicated a specific architectural theme yet, so once again, country club theme has been recommended in this assessment based on the amenities provided. The lots will be served by public water and private septic systems. Spalding County Health Department approval will be needed prior to the installation of the private septic systems for each lot, and it'll be part of their building permit process if this is approved. The property is currently split-zoned AR-one agricultural residential and R-two single-family residential. The concurrent zoning application is twenty-one dash one zero Z, and the planning commission has recommended conditional approval to the BOC for final, final decision. We will take that final decision after this recommendation of the Board of Appeals on the special exception to the same commissioners meeting. The compliance with zoning standards, appendix four, section eight oh three A three states a conservation subdivision as a permitted use within the R-two zoning district. So with the updated drawing, with the time that was, you know, that's been down with this application, further soil studies and tests have proved that they would not be able to get the total yield, so they've actually reduced the number of lots from the original application or the original time this application was submitted. As such, with the forty-four percent of green space, this will qualify as a conservation subdivision when it comes in. Appendix A of the subdivision ordinance, Article seven, conservation subdivision, section seven oh three. We have our dimensional standards and density determinations, so the maximum density factor as allowed, and under the particular zoning district in which the subdivision is located, would be one unit per two acres, and the density is actually, as illustrated in this plan, is actually one unit per two point five, or two point four nine acres, so it's actually slightly above the density, the density minimums that comes in. Minimum lot area, we're nowhere near that, because most of the lots are going to be at least one acre in size, due to the private septic systems, with the largest lot being one point six one acres in size. Let's see, minimum lot width, everything is compliant with a minimum lot width, the proposed front, rear, and side setbacks. Maximum impervious coverage is at least fifty percent limit on each lot, unless they start building some way bigger houses, this thing will be fine, because with it being an acre, you got forty-three thousand square feet, so that means that twenty thousand square feet would have to be impervious surface for it to hit that matter. So maximum height restrictions, forty-five, staff does not anticipate anything above the two-story range with an application when this thing finally gets, goes to the Board of Commissioners. All weather road access must be paved, so roads will be constructed to county specifications and subject to our approval before acceptance. Minimum tract size is twenty-five acres from the parent tract, so we are well above the minimum tract size at a hundred and nineteen acres that comes in. Minimum aggregate green space being forty percent, there is forty-four percent, and there are some flood zones that's included, but with everything else that is stipulated with the redesign of the concept plan on your screens now, it still hits forty-four percent, you know, as far as staff is concerned. The lot yield, streets and sidewalk design criteria are the same as previous applications. So transportation numbers, or, excuse me, let's go back to land use before we do that. So pursuant to the Spalding County Comprehensive Plan, the future development map has this area classified as rural neighborhood. The design principles of rural neighborhood designation identify a maximum density of one unit per one acre. So we're actually above that, so we're, we're good to go. It does enumerate an exception for a density-neutral conservation subdivision, and with this density of one unit per two point four nine acres, the concept plan as submitted is above the, is above the minimum acreage, or minimum density acreage required. Proposed plan is consistent with the preservation of natural landscape and high percentage of open space and green space for the residential neighborhood. The pedestrian connectivity with the side, proposed sidewalks and trails within the neighborhood also meet the design principles of rural neighborhood. Now let's get into transportation. So average trip hours based on forty-eight lots, you're looking at an AM peak hour trips of thirty-six per hour, PM peak hour of forty-nine trips, Saturdays forty-five trips per peak hour, and Sunday forty-one trips. Total weekday trips would be four fifty-nine. Going to the impact on the schools, once again, going, based off of census numbers, one point two children per home and forty-eight developable lots, you're looking at approximately fifty-eight children that will join the school system as a result of this neighborhood if it is approved. Portions are, within the flood zones and wetlands are submit, are identified on the submitted site plan. The site is located within the protected water supply shed or the S-two watershed overlay district, and it is within the S-three groundwater recharge overlay map. Applicant has not submitted a proposed house plans, but has still stipulated that all homes will be a minimum of two thousand square feet of heated space. As a result, we will probably change the zoning, recommended zoning to R-one, when it goes before the BOC next month. And so that will be compliant with the R-one zoning. Applicant has indicated that approximately fifty-three point one nine acres or forty-four percent of common space is provided. Common space includes green space, floodplain, existing lakes, and detention area, and the amenities listed include a playground area and pickleball courts. Four-foot sidewalks with streetscape design criteria will be required, other design criteria would be there. Since the plan is compliant with the conservation subdivision, it really doesn't have to pick a theme for, for that yet. So the provisions of the four thirteen G are no longer needed. You see the special exception guidelines, must not be detrimental to the use. Adjacent properties are zoned R-two and AR-one, they range in size from point forty-four acres to thirty-four acres in size. Most adjacent properties are developed as single-family detached residences, few of the large tracts are undeveloped. Home sizes range, and, range from six hundred square feet to over four thousand square feet in the general area. Staff does not anticipate a detrimental effect to the adjacent properties. Traffic will increase in the area, but the impact will be less due to the density proposed in the application from what they could do if they were, if they were to choose other Must not have any depreciating effects, there should be no depreciating effects created by allowing the subdivision. The concept for the subdivision does meet the criteria for a conservation subdivision. Must not adversely affect the use, existing uses. While the proposed lot sizes are less than two acres, the density related are slightly less than one house per two acres, so the underlying zoning that has been applied for, so it is compliant. It must meet all other requirements of this ordinance. If the zoning is approved, the proposed concept plan of a conservation subdivision will be compliant with this ordinance. Staff does have some conditional approvals. With the redesign of the concept plan, application is compliant with the guidelines of a conservation subdivision. First floor of all homes shall have a minimum of two, one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of heated space. Applicant has stipulated that it will be a minimum two thousand square foot house. Minimum two-car garage for all homes with dimensions of at least twenty feet by twenty feet. All homes shall be, have fully sited yards, front sides, and backyards. All public parking spaces in the amenity area shall be governed by Appendix G of the Spalding County UDO. The following amenity features shall be completed prior to approval and acceptance of the fire, final plat. The design of an amenity area shall be submitted with their construction plans. They'll need a playground for ages two to twelve with at least eight play elements, three of which were at ground level and are ADA accessible, and all other listed amenities on the concept plan. Sidewalk shall be a minimum of four feet in width and comply with streetscape designs enumerated in code, and a homeowners association will be created to maintain the common areas. Covenant shall be submitted with the final plat application for approval by the BOC. And the following conditions were recommended by the planning commission, commission during the initial rezoning application. Minimum house size will be two thousand square feet of heated space. The creation of an HOA is required, HOA shall maintain all common space and amenities. Vinyl siding is prohibited. Brick and masonry facades on all of the houses with accents of at least twenty-five percent on all three sides of the house, or, excuse me, on, on three sides of the house. Amenities shall include a pickleball court, playground, and nature trail as shown on the concept plan, and if the rezoning application is approved, preliminary and final plats shall be presented to the planning commission and board of commissioners per the guidelines of the subdivision ordinance before building permits can be applied for. Applicants and owners are here tonight, Mr. Chairman, to answer any questions, and I do believe we have some folks on the sign-up sheet.
Who was the applicant?
Applicant is going to be Spalding Vineyard one twenty LLC.
Guys, any questions with the staff?
No, not at this time.
All right. Good evening. My name is Richard Ferry, I'm with Spalding Vineyard one twenty LLC, two seventy North Jeff Davis, Fayetteville, Georgia. I gotta admit, that was one of the best staff reports I've ever heard. That was fantastic. We, we agree with all those, the conditions, what we talked about during the meeting. Very generally, I think our biggest area of concern when we looked at this piece of property was the pond, and as, the pond has a creek that flows into it and flows out of it, we felt it was absolutely necessary to, let it go away?
No, I was pulling it out.
Okay. We, we felt that it was absolutely necessary to protect that. We have, as Mr. Bond mentioned, we have the amenities that, that utilize the front end of that pond, and then we also added a walking trail that circles that pond, so we can really get the best, the most benefit out of it while we're protecting it. Other than that, really don't have too much more to say. We did have to change the lot total to get to the, the acreage requirements, and we were, we're happy to do that, and I'm here for any questions if you have any for me.
No, no.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, no one else has signed up?
That's it, that's okay. All right, do we have a motion on application twenty-two zero eight S with conditional staff approval?
I move approval of application twenty-two dash zero eight S to include the staff conditions.
Okay.
I second the motion.
You second, all in favor? Raise your hand. That's it. Application twenty-two zero eight S is approved. All right, then, next on the agenda, approval of the minutes of March the tenth, twenty twenty-two. You all have a motion?
I move approval.
I second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Nice.
Um, any other business? No?
No. But what, when do we expect to get a replacement for Mr. Bryant?
One second, please. Hey, can you guys hold off until we finish? Thank you.
Do we, any update on that?
Madam, Madam board member, we are still waiting on, you know, recommendations from the Board of Commissioners. I've actually reached out to three or four folks that I've come across in my short time here. All folks are, are happy to be asked, but nobody wants to make the commitment, as it will be for a multi-year obligation, you know, one night a month as it comes in. So please, if y'all know of anyone else, please send them our way, please recommend them to Steve, and it is Commissioner Ryan Bolden's district that Mr. Ed Brown was from, from, so we'll need to get those names back to him, because it'll be his honor to make that recommendation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other business? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Well, you were, you were making the motion.
I was.
Okay, all right, second.
Yes, all in favor? Adjourn. Thank you.
Thank y'all for a longer-than-usual night, I appreciate your service.
Sorry, hold on.
I spent a whole night, look, my, my wife was telling me it's time to stay, and I think that's not appropriate.
Your wife is always this type of thing.
Be smart, my wife, she tells you it's time to stay, you need to move.
Yeah, I think we're all family, leave me alone.
I need to remind her, it works sometimes, but I just do it. Look, I, I need to.